I'm going to call the regular council meeting to order for February 18th, 2020. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our education here by Pastor Dave Lee.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
True God and holy heavenly Father, here as we pray, your name is above every name. May we image that tonight. Before we give our requests, we confess our sins, which are many as a society. Abortions, sexual perversions that depart from one man and one woman in holy matrimony, drunkenness and other drug dependencies, all sorts of extortions and thefts. And yet you are merciful. And maybe worse of all, apathy on the part of those who profess and invoke the name of Jesus Christ. We commit this meeting seeking wisdom from you. Grant your servants, the council members, and mayor both the wisdom and courage to serve you in true righteousness. May they be good stewards also of the citizens' taxes. To you be honored and glory, the only wise God. In Jesus' name, amen.
Here.
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 Need a motion to accept the minutes from the February 4th, 2020 regular meeting.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This is a time to grant for visitors to speak. First on the agenda is Commissioner Pat McCauley from the State Treasurer's Office.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Your honorable mayor has asked me to come to speak at council tonight to kind of give you a quick briefing on some of the programs at the Treasurer's Office. I met with the mayor a couple of weeks ago and he thought it'd be a good idea for me to come by. And just tell you a little bit about them. I've got a folder for everyone and if I could just take a few seconds to go over each of the programs, some of them the city may already be using, some there may be interested in, some there may not. That's completely up to the city's doing. But the first program that I'd like to talk to you about is Results Ohio. This is a new initiative created by Treasurer Sprague that is a new way to look at combating some of the challenges and social issues that communities face across the state, be it the opioid crisis, housing, workforce development, any number of different issues that this can help out with. And it's going to be utilizing the knowledge and financing of the private sector instead of the taxpayer dollars. And its basis form, best way I can describe it to you is, for example, if a company has a way that they think that they can help increase the workforce for skilled labor, they would come together with the Treasurer's Office and a third party and put up, say $2 million for this project. The Treasurer's Office would take that money, put it into a bond. Then the program would be funded from a pool of money from the federal, state, and local levels that the Treasurer's Office has access to. If after two, three years, this program meets the goals that were set out at the beginning, the Treasurer's Office is going to buy back that program and that business is going to get a, possibly all their money back or even more because of interest on that money and a bond. That way, instead of trying to find out if a program's going to work and using taxpayer dollars to do that, we're going to rely on the private sector and foundations and such. This way, if the program does not work, we are using taxpayer dollars to find that out. But if it does work, we're going to go to the legislature and say, we need to find a way to fund this because it works. And then it's hopeful that possibly that program can be replicated in other areas of the state that are facing the same issues. So instead of using the taxpayer dollars, we're going to use private funds to, it's just a unique way of looking at how to battle some of these issues that communities are facing across the state. The next program that's in your notebook, Star Ohio. I don't know if the city is already participating in that? Okay, great. That's the investment program through the Treasurer's Office that allows communities and school districts to be able to get a pretty good rate of return on their investment through the Star Ohio program. A lot of times you can use some money, a lot of communities will use their local financial institutions. This is just another option for communities to use that might give them a better rate of return. The Ohio checkbook is the next one. The city is already participating in that and we thank you for that. One of the changes that is taking place with the Ohio checkbook, currently the software that goes into making the checkbook is housed in Quamblo, Colorado. So instead of shipping our dollars to Colorado, we're going to bring that in-house. Treasurer Sprague and Lieutenant Governor Huestead came to an agreement where that program is going to be housed and run out of one of the offices of the Lieutenant Governor. That way, we aren't shipping the money out to another state. We're keeping all of our dollars in state. And that new format should be up and running by July 1st. OMAP, the Ohio Market Access Program, is another great financing tool for communities. Cities, villages, townships, school districts can all use this program and it allows you to use the bond rating of the state to get better financing rates for short-term capital projects. Communities have asked, can we use it for a new lead to for vehicles that we purchase? We're looking to buy a new fire truck. We're building a jail. Schools have been interested in a bus garage. Yes, it can be used for all of those projects and more, of course. But you can work with your local financial institution and then there's paperwork that you fill out to get that rating that the state will use. And if that note does not roll, the Treasurer's Office is standing behind it so we will assume and take over that bond and then you would do a payment process to the Treasurer's Office. That way, your credit rating is not damaged. The next program are our linked deposit programs. These are economic development programs for local businesses as well as local homeowners. Through the Grow Now and Re-Energize Ohio program, businesses can get financing up to $500,000 or $400,000 depending on the program to either, if they're going to be doing an expansion at their business, if they're adding square footage, if they're putting in IT infrastructure, or if they are bringing on new vehicles, they can use that to help fund that at a lower interest rate. The business would work with their local financial institution and there's paperwork that you fill out and that would give you up to a 3% reduction in your financing rates. The other one for businesses is if you're bringing on employees, if you get a new piece of equipment and you need employees to operate that, I believe you can get up to that $400,000 to bring on two full-time employees or four part-time employees. So a great way to help out a business to get up and running with new equipment, help them out with their employee situation. The EcoLink is for homeowners. If a homeowner is doing any work to their house and their property that will increase the property value, they can get up to $50,000 in reduced financing. So if you're putting in a new kitchen, new bathroom, adding a garage, new deck, siding, roof, you can use this tool to get a reduced rate for that $50,000. You don't have to get the whole $50,000 but you can get up to $50,000. And another great thing about these programs, they aren't exclusive. If you want to use the Re-Energize Ohio and Grow Now, you can use those both at the same time. I have included in the packet a list of all your local financial institutions that participate in the linked deposit program with the Treasurer's Office for both Bucyrus and Crawford County. If your institution is not on there, let us know. We're happy to talk with them to let them know what the benefits are of participating in the linked deposit program. The last one are stable accounts. If you're familiar with a 529 account savings for college, this was mirrored after that. This is saving for an individual who has a disability. So that individual, when they're older, they can use that money for everyday living expenses. For example, if you have a child with a disability, you can start that stable account and start saving money for them for when they're older. Anybody can put money into that stable account. Brother, sister, mom, dad, aunt, uncle, grandma, friends, neighbors can help out that individual with the disability. Now, if that individual is able to work, they can put money into their stable account too. And that way, they aren't going to affect what they're receiving from the federal government and Social Security and Medicaid. They will be able to put that money into that account instead of a savings or a checking account because if a person with a disability goes over $2,000, that's what affects what they receive from the federal government. Putting it into a stable account is not affecting what they receive from the federal government. So it's giving those individuals more earning power, more savings power because they don't have to do a spend down or anything like that. We are just trying to get the word out on that as much as we can. Since Treasurer Sprague has come into office, in January last year, there were 9,000 participants in the program. Now there's over 14,000. So Ohio is leading the way in stable accounts and helping out those individuals with disabilities. We also would recommend and hope businesses and city governments and village governments, county governments would consider setting up a direct deposit option for employees to take money directly from their paycheck into a stable account. Once again, it could be a parent, it could be the person with a disability. It's free, the Treasurer's Office is more than happy to assist and help setting that up as well. But in a nutshell, those are the programs that we have at the Treasurer's Office that can help out communities and businesses and homeowners and folks with a disability. If you ever have any questions on that, my business card is in the packet. Do not hesitate to reach out to me. Like the Treasurer, I'm from Findlay, I live in Findlay, doesn't take me long to get to Bucyrus. I always like to come to the properties while I'm from town. So if there's ever anything that we can do to help you out, do not hesitate to reach out. Treasurer Sprague, if you have not met him yet, he wants communities, businesses, citizens to look at the Treasurer's Office as a resource and not be afraid to reach out to us. If we aren't the organization that handles that in Columbus, we're going to try to point you in the right direction. We aren't just going to say, that's not us and hang up. We're going to try to help you out to get you in the right direction so that you can get your problems and issues and questions answered. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those right now.
I do have one for you, Pat.
Yeah.
On the OMAP program, if the bond fails to roll and the state that takes it over, does the rate remain constant with what we had already assigned?
It should.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a question. Are we considering this, Mr. Mayor, for the fire truck purchase?
No, we've already disclosed that, releasing, we already signed the papers with that. Too late. I would have all come a week earlier. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak to you today. And once again, don't be afraid to reach out if you need something. Thank you. Next is Cassie Herschler, the Executive Director of the Crawford County Council on Aging.
Hello, I'm here today to ask for your support to vote yes for senior services on March 17th. Crawford County voters have approved a levy every five years beginning in 1995 to fund services provided by the Crawford County Council on Aging. Crawford County voters are being asked to continue services for senior citizens such as home-delivered meals, congregant meals, transportation, home care services, and information and referral. The Senior Services Levy serves Crawford County residents age 60 and over. Eligibility is not based on income but rather the need for services regardless of income or assets. The Council on Aging is asking for your support on a renewal of $1,000 of the existing levy and an increase of .75 mil over five years. This will cost a $100,000 homeowner $58.44. Voting yes for the Senior Services Levy will allow us to keep pace with the rapid growth of our older adults and it will help seniors to stay independent in their own homes. Any questions? Thank you.
And then Amber Wirthman, candidate for Crawford County Commissioner.
Hello, thank you for your time here tonight. I just want to do a quick introduction. As Kirk said, I am running for Crawford County Commissioner. Just want to tell you a little bit about myself. Born and raised in Crawford County, I was a graduate of Buckeye Central High School. I currently live in Gallion and most of my family's from Bucyrus, so I consider myself a full, all-about Crawford County gal. I actually, after attending Buckeye Central, I have my Bachelor's in Business Administration. I'm on track this May to graduate with my Master's in Communication from Ashland University. I currently work for the United Way of North Central Ohio, which does cover Crawford County as well as Marion and Wyandotte County. Through that job, I have a lot of experience with allocation, budgeting, grant writing, and fundraising, which would all come in handy, I think, also in the role of County Commissioner. I currently manage a $2 million budget annually as well as multiple staff through United Way. Serve on some local boards as Crawford representative. I am on the Gallion Historical Society Board as well as the Area Agency on Aging Foundation Board, which is out of Mansfield and they do cover Crawford as well. Also newly appointed to the Third Street Family Health Services Board, which just opened their location here at community counseling, so we're very excited about that. Let's see, anything else? I am a wife and mother, have a son, Logan, and my husband's name is Tim. Again, I feel blessed to have grown up here. I'm happy to have the opportunity to finally run and hopefully give something back to the place that's given me so much. Very passionate and feel like a very diplomatic person, so just want to bring everybody together and come to consensus and find solutions for some of the issues we'll be facing, especially as Cassie said, with an aging population and just trying to draw more business and young professionals in to complement our seniors that are here as well. So I hope you will consider voting Wirthman, Amber Wirthman, on March 17th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then next is Valerie Sprague with the Bucyrus Tree Board.
Yes, hello. I'm Valerie Sprague representing the Bucyrus Tree Commission. And welcome to you, all members of council. I just want to introduce very quickly some members. I have David Cuddell, Mary Louie Minor, Brad Van Borghes, and Jeff Panavich, and Susan Catcard who is up here tonight. I'd just like to kind of bring you up to speed. Our commission is getting rolling now and I just, you've probably seen some improvements on some city streets. I just want to kind of touch base with you and let you know what we're up to and what we've accomplished in 2019. Because of the generous commitment in Shoreside, the Bucyrus City Council, and the residents of Bucyrus, the Bucyrus Tree Commission has realized a very successful and productive 2019. Our board has a vision and a plan. This year has seen the plan move forward. We have been very pleased and encouraged by the compliments and overwhelming positive feedback that we have received from many residents of Bucyrus. Proposed projects have been completed and many more are on the books or underway. The major project for 2019 was the reforestation of Plymouth Street. Following the completion of this sewer project, the street was denuded of its stately 100-plus year old canopy of trees. Now, after hours of planning, consultation, selection, and planting, new trees are now welcoming travelers and residents as they drive along Plymouth Street. The population of 100 trees is a carefully chosen mixture of eight different species of flowering trees and maples, which will add color and softness to the street. Unfortunately, large canopy trees were not an option because of restrictions imposed by overhead wiring and the size of the tree lawns. If some of the live trees bear fruit, the fruit is persistent, meaning that the fruit will decompose on the trees over the winter and will not cause undue litter on the ground. We are extremely pleased and excited by the outcome of this project. 25 new trees have been planted in Allmiller Park. They are a mixture of maples and oaks that will have plenty of space to grow and to develop into a grove, which will add a beautiful splash of color in the fall to our already very welcoming park. Two of the regal oaks were planted during the ceremony with the Bucyrus Historical Society to commemorate and recognize the Norton's family's contribution to the founding of Bucyrus. Hopefully, in the future, the area in which they were planted will be expanded into a grove to be planted in the Norton's name. Also, all of the stumps of fallen and removed trees in Allmiller have been ground out. There were trees that were planted on Sandusky, South Sandusky Avenue last year that needed to be replaced due to natural attrition and vandalism. This was accomplished this past fall, bringing the Sandusky Street project to completion. Arbor Day found us once again planting trees with help from students at the high school and elementary school. Traditionally, Arbor Day is celebrated in the spring. However, the Arbor Day Foundation has deemed it necessary to allow communities to recognize this day at the time of year most suited for planting in their respective growing zones. Because of this, we will be celebrating Arbor Day sometime in the fall now, as this is the optimal time for planting in our growing zone. As with all new endeavors, there has been an educational learning curve involved with the community. Some residents have questioned us as to why we were planting so late in the fall. In the fall, trees become dormant. They do not require a great deal of water or nutrients to survive. After fall rains, snow melt, and spring rains, the trees can flower, leaf out, and grow after settling in over the winter. You can plant trees successfully all winter long as long as the ground is not frozen. Many, many thanks to Bucyrus Railcar for donating 200 trees in recognition of Bucyrus's bicentennial celebration. And those trees are going to be planted over a period of three years, not all 200 in the first year. Our efforts will concentrate more on maintenance, pruning, and hazardous tree removal in the upcoming season. I want to thank you for your past support and we look forward to your continued support in the future. And thank you very much. We really appreciate it. And there's been so many people that we've met on the streets and the parks that have just absolutely been overwhelming in their support to our program. Anybody who's driven down Plymouth Street or through Allmiller Park, we see we have a good start and we are really, really encouraged about going forward. If anybody has any questions, we'd like to answer them. Yes.
Are you taking volunteers to help plant these trees?
We will take a volunteer for any, any project we have. And you can contact, well, either the mayor or any one of us. We'd be glad to entertain volunteering. Absolutely.
I'm sure there's some members of council that'd love to help, so.
Good. I'd be glad to hear.
We'll get in touch with the mayor.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any unscheduled guest speakers wishing to address council?
Mr. President, before Cassie reads, did you, did I miss, did you want, I'm sorry to interrupt there, were you asking city council to have a resolution in support of the levy?
Yes.
Had you done, did I miss that?
I did not ask that, no. I think we had asked that previously, yes.
Okay, so that would need to be referred, then, okay, to make sure.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, didn't want to overstep what you're asking for, so thank you for your left one.
Any unscheduled speakers that want to address council? Rob said he'll refer to you.
What?
Oh, it's me.
Okay, Carolyn Shireman, Positive Seekers, 1065 Eastville Avenue, Bucyrus. And I'd like to say one thing here. Was it a year ago, two years ago, Joe? The Positive Seekers donated a tulip tree at Allmiller Park. However, Jeff, we never got a picture.
Well, the bad news is, Carolyn, that it didn't make it. And because several times I was out there and young kids were climbing on it, and so we'll make sure we get another tree planted, you know, dedicated in positive.
You know how many corners I have worked on?
I'm sorry to give you the bad news tonight. It was a beautiful tree while it lasted, but, you know, we got, we learned a valuable lesson. There's two.
Yeah, don't buy it from.
No, 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 what's that? You've got, there's two group things you've got to do with a new tree in that area. One is to block it off, keep away from deer, the other one's block it off, keep away from kids.
That's right.
So you learned that lesson, next time we'll block it off, at least for a few years. We got you covered.
This is Joe Graham. He's with the Positive Seekers and he is going to read this.
Honorable mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, council president, chiefs, and citizens. So over the past several years, we've continued to work within the community of Bucyrus to help our citizens find opportunities to smile. Our work at the farmer's market has introduced members to the concept of being a positive seeker, someone who looks for the positive in their lives. One question has come up again and again, when will you be having another Red Bike Event? After our plans for the last Red Bike Event fell through, we were, of course, disappointed. Even though much of what took place to cause the event cancellation was beyond our control, we felt we'd let down so many people. So many people wanted what we wanted, including the fairgrounds, who felt this to be a big benefit to Bucyrus. We vowed to not return to the RWD event until such point in time we felt confident in our ability to organize and host the event on our terms. We believe that time has come. What we've learned from our previous events in utilizing the connections we made when we pushed for the last RWD, we believe that we can safely announce the Red Bike Events will be returning in July of 2021 to the Crawford County Fairgrounds. RWD will need to be a community effort. These things don't just spontaneously fall together. To have an event at this low cost for our citizens, expecting to build the usage of the fairgrounds for the day, entertainment sound, lighting, insurance, and promotion. We will also need to coordinate with interested organizations and fairground tenants to assure they're represented that day. Although we now have a source of funding for our organization's internal operations, we will again be seeking sponsorships to cover the projected $6,000 plus cost of this event. We will be turning to our community sponsors with our event proposals and we believe that working with them, we can make this event a permanent attraction every July preceding the Kiwanis fireworks. Let's start off Bucyrus's third century on a firm wedding of community. This is the point where we ask you among the leaders of our community for help. We know in the past We know in the past we've had strained relationships with several individuals in our city government. It is our hope and prayer that a shared vision of what we could bring to the citizens of Cyrus would weigh heavier than past political differences. We know we have in common with each of you, regardless of your political affiliations, a desire to do the right thing for our people. It is our belief that we as a community are strongest when we consider side our personal differences in support of the common cause. We would ask every member of city government, from our mayor to our councilpersons, from our chiefs to our clerks, to please reach out to work connections to help us make this a reality. As you reach out to Andress for sponsorship, please keep in mind that we want this to be an ongoing event, not just a one-time thing. We would ask each of you to search your hearts, and if what we have said rings true, to work with us again to secure the corporate funding will be essential to putting this event on our calendar every year of our community's third century. With deepest respect, we thank you.
Any questions? Anybody got their checkbooks? That's a kidding question.
Thank you.
And now I have something. Mr. Mayor, is your new project?
We're gonna start, we typically have a three-minute rule on the guest speaking, and I know we all went over there a minute, but you kind of was wrong to the first minute there, so.
So you want me shut up?
I'm not saying it that way.
Can I come back up and open my mouth later?
After meeting.
Oh.
Well, there's gonna, there's gonna be some other times for guest speaking here for other things.
Well, I just wanted to, about our sponsorship and how it will coincide with the sponsorship that the new park is going to be getting, will that take away our chances of sponsorship from businesses? You know what I'm saying?
Send, send an email to the administration on that and ask for that, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to address council at this time? Hearing non-communications and positions?
We have a one communication. This is addressed to the Cyrus City Council, District 11, from the Cyrus Public Library. Here are city council members and the Cyrus Public Library Board of Trustees. As you see, the resignation trustee was a fan coord due to this fan coord of other committees. Your resignation is effective immediately. Your three-year term expires on December 30, 2020. The Cyrus Public Library Board of Trustees, the vice of Cyrus City Councilperson, one of the following persons to replace her as a fan coord: Tricia Brainerd, Charge Master and Credit Analyst for LBITDA; Matthew Fisk, English Language Arts Instructor for Pioneer Career and Technology Center. Thank you, Stephen D. Buchanan, Director of the Cyrus Public Library. You'll see attached information on both of his candidates, and it might have to be referred to the Economic Development Committee.
Yep. Still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Keever, is there anything you want to update council with on the planning committee?
The only thing is, we have approved the rezoning request for 1725 Public Avenue to go to public hearing, and the easement of Finley Hill. We have sent that to, it has passed, and that is for the Johnny Appleseed plan. That's up by parties on most of Sandusky.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for?
Do we need to set that reschedule date?
I would agree with that.
Never mind, Joe.
Any other questions for the planning committee? Anything to call in, Mr. Pope?
Uh, no. We, it looks like we passed on the, approved the parking lot, too. What Baker's doing there, our purchasing of that, we're gonna move it to CIC, so that way we can make the same lot, and then use that proceeds to fix our other lots that are in dire repair, the dire need repair.
Any other members, you have any questions on that?
You report it.
I will.
Next report, the finance committee, Mr. McKeever.
Yes, we approved the appropriation of money for the enterprise fund reimbursement. That is to total $74,870 of refunds per fund, and we approved that from the finance committee.
Any questions for the finance committee? Health and safety, Mr. Marsh?
We met on February 6th. We're, council president updated the public law and the current stance of our EMS contract, and then we heard from proponents and opponents of the request for the Second Amendment sanctuary study.
Any questions for the health and safety chair? Hearing non-traffic commission, Mr. Greaser?
Nothing to report tonight, Mr. President. No meetings scheduled at this time. We don't have any on the agenda. But I'll have any questions or comments on traffic issues.
Mr. McKeever?
I just bring it up what I've been asked, when, when will the intersection of West Stone and East Mansfield be repaired?
Yeah. There...
Tentatively.
When is it? Yeah, tentatively, it's on the hill of Maple Street. So we gotta have warmer weather, obviously.
That's true.
And we let, we try to let it settle, you know, when the concrete in there, and I would think if weather holds, whether it turns better, maybe, that'll be one problem we should be doing. I'm hoping to that, but it'll be our top priority.
Yeah, there was a lot of people concerned about that.
Long-suffering people on West Stone.
Write that down right now, just so you know, Jeff.
Hold me back. Quote, you don't just pull me. We're gonna, it's our top priority, West Stone Street.
Okay. Do you have any idea on maybe when it'll be repaved?
On West Stone?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I was gonna say, on May 1st.
I just hope it doesn't end up happening fair week.
Oh, no. No, it will not be fair.
Any other questions for the traffic commission?
I need a motion to accept the minutes of the ladies' committee reports collectively. So moved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Report of city officers, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, congratulations to some new businesses that had ribbon cuttings the last couple weeks, Burger King, the health and wellness clinic that was mentioned earlier, Without Borders, Finley Square, and KM Company, who bought Brandy's. And we thank you for doing that, investing in the city, keeping a nice traditional small businesses, which have a backbone of the city. I met with Dale Van Valkenburg and Terry Harold from Voya, their financial planners, who handle just one of the cities and employ the deferred comp program, and we have 37 city workers in that. Comp, deferred comp program, it's a, it's a really good thing. Income is, invest tax deferred, and it's a supplement to retirement pensions. We also have one other one, Ohio Deferred Comp, which is also, it's well liked also. I've got a couple bowlers. The city has got a lot of good bowlers, and I'm not one of them, but Mike Lear and Don McLawson, we're gonna be meeting this weekend, Saturday at 1:00. I think Mike Lear started out with a 300 game. He was facing Rick McWaters, last year's champion. I mean, how do you beat a 300 game, you really can't do it. So I was, I got a strike on the first ball this year. Mr. Ratliff will testify that I've never anywhere come close to that before. And I got, and Rob and I are gonna throw the first ball, he doesn't know that yet, but the ladies' invitation, which is next week, and I hope to improve on my gutter ball from last year. Rob beat me, and I think I still owe him lunch for that, too. This morning, this is one of the fun things I get to do, meet with third-grade students that went for elementary as part of the junior achievement that Mr. Basinger has done so well with and spent so much time. Basically, what we do is tell them about what goes on with the city on their level and what the services we provide, and we kind of build a city. How do you, how do you, you know, with an eye on where things should go. And they always have really nice questions, and they're well behaved, and it's, I'm impressed with the kids in the schools. Their names can be a little hard to pronounce, but, you know, they're good kids. Rotary Pancake Day was last Saturday. Tammy Tima and the team pulled off another good day. Everything they make is, goes to charity. The Rotary Option Festival, I'll put a plug in for that. That's coming up in April, and the Salvation Army Music Program, it'd be beneficial of that this year. So we've been to that before. It's a lot of fun.
Just support that, too, because Ray's doing good things with that.
Yeah, yeah, good. Kevin cooked a lot of, he's a sausage guru, and he has a t-shirt to prove it.
Closet mash.
Yeah, so thank you to all the people, and they've made a lot of positive speakers are here tonight, Rotary Closet Mash, all the good ones, and, you know, there's a lot of good people out there. And Mr. Me and I were together on Saturday, and we heard a really good band from Cyrus called the X Band, who made it here last year. They played at the Rock and Wolf Hall, trying to make it what we call, what is called the final exam. The good news is, they made it. They were unbelievable. I think you'll attest to that.
Awesome.
They were, they were really good, and they're gonna be back here in two weeks. There's 36 bands from around the state, high school bands, not marching band, but they could be a band that's formed by, you know, four kids, three kids from the high school. And ours is very unique in that it has a lot of kids. They have a horn section. They play guitar, bass, I mean, drums. They just, they just play a really, a really nice mix of stuff, and they're very, very talented. So Mark Fisk does all the arrangements, and some of you were council last year, and they were here. We honored them, and we're gonna have them back again sometime March or April. Now, Mark said, if you want to go, tickets are $12. Tickets are available at, from him until Wednesday. They have a lot to sell out. So if you want tickets, call out to school and they'll sell the tickets, and then after they're sold out, you can get on rockhole.com under the events tab. So there's a lot of people from Cyrus. And you toured the Rock Hole Hall of Fame, too. Twelve bucks, you toured the Rock Hole, 16 of bands. Good people in Cyrus, June. Come in on that. Couple hundred from Cyrus made the trek. It was, it's well worth it to see these kids. I mean, they just, and they nailed it, too. I mean, they're just...
They're enthusiastic about it, too. That's the coolest part, they're enjoying themselves.
Check out some of the videos we, that we put out on Facebook. That one video got over 4,000 views. Anyway, thank you. I guess that's it for today. I don't have any referrals, so that would be the end of my report, Mr. President.
Any council members have any questions on the mayor's report? Hearing now, the safety service director.
Yeah, and for Jeff's report, I was gonna refer the engineering, choice of our engineering company for the Potters, where they want to finance. Last week, we had the sewer separation meeting. That was for group one. A nice turnout. A lot of good questions. And we have another meeting scheduled for next Wednesday at 6:00 PM. That will be for group 3A. So everybody in 3A will have received a letter by now, and tell them about what's to expect, you know, how long it's going to take, and we had our engineers are here, and our contractors here, and they've answered every question, and they're very good about renovation, so. So next week, Wednesday, you'll know the website, too. Okay, and I was asked the other day about Arrowhead. There's a neighborhood preconstruction meeting coming for Arrowhead Drive, which is going to be reworked, half of it anyway, on March 11th at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Letters have not gone out yet. If you live in that area, don't worry. They will be going out here in the next week, though. I think that's it. That's all Jeff has.
Mr. Marsh?
I don't know if you've already discussed, or if they've already discussed, that the letters are only gonna go to the people in the affected area. I'd like to see if we've been sent into that entire suburb.
What, which, what are you talking about?
Arrowhead.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not gonna be that many more homes to get the people all the way down. They're gonna be in Ricky Lee Lane back in there, mostly possibly, the drive.
That could be the point I'm here. I'm not, you know, Ricky Lee, you know, the ones that use that as a, I'm pretty sure that's the case, but I'll double check.
Yes, I forgot to ask you when it was your turn, but I'll ask it now. I've been asked by several people who live out on County Road 330 East, their water rates have gone up, they said.
Not ours.
And I want to know, who do I need to have them contact? Is still through county?
Our rates have not gone up this year. We haven't risen since last summer, and we promised we wouldn't rate any rates this year.
Well, that's what I, I just, who should I refer them to?
Well, it would be the commission, the commission office.
So, so, up to that.
Yeah, county commission, yeah. It wasn't, wasn't our doing.
Okay.
This time, I can say that.
Any other members of council have any questions for the?
If I had someone who complains about the alley, I don't really know who to go to.
What kind of complaint?
Chuck holes in it.
What, you know where it is?
Between Winger and Maple. It's a small alley.
Okay, Winger and Maple. I'm sure we'll find it. I'll, I'll mention it tomorrow. Yeah, if anybody ever has a general...
I drove down it, and it looks almost like, that's why I kind of wanted to bring it up, because if they are repurposing some roads somewhere, you have like extra stuff.
Right, we have, we think we're building it.
It like needs to put in some of the holes before they would ever put rattlesnake, because it's, the holes have worked their way pretty deep, yeah.
Well, this is the time of your show's on.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll refer that tomorrow to the street supervisor, and they get right on it. Any other issues in the mayor's office or the administration that you want to update council on?
Nothing tonight, that's fact.
Anybody have any questions? Moving on to the...
Do you want to refer that?
Oh, we need a motion to refer the engineering for the Potters, Board of Finance Committee.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And moving on to the law director's report.
Thank you, sir. Number report, we have two referrals, the council on aging resolution. We have KCS finals. Yeah. And then the rental vacant property registrations, they've kind of come in and out, time to throw those back to health and safety.
Isn't that already in?
It's in.
So we need a motion to refer the council on aging to finance and the vacant property.
Health and safety.
Yeah. Just two different things.
Vain can order, so I can talk about vacant buildings, that's it.
Okay, there's just a real prime.
Okay, then we just need a motion to refer the council on aging resolution finance.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's in finance. Any questions for the law director? Need a motion for the rental pop, rental property going to health and safety?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That would be in health and safety, and then any questions for the law director? Anybody? The auditor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a report tonight, but I did provide the breakdown of the 2019 payroll for everyone to look at. I would explain that the gross pay includes the overtime dollars and used comp and all of that. That is not on top of that gross pay. So it's just a breakdown that I've provided for about 20 years now. And if you have any questions, you can always contact me about it. I have no referrals tonight, so that's the end of my report.
Any other, council members, are there any questions? Hearing now, the treasurer's report. We need a motion to accept the statement of cash positions from January 31st, 2020.
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The treasurer report, I think we have a treasurer's report up here. And there's no police chief here, no fire chief. So I need a motion to accept all the city officers' reports. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Visitors input regarding any of those reports of special committees and cities, city officers. Is there any visitors who want to comment on those reports? Hearing none. Does anybody need a recess?
No.
No recess. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have one ordinance, ordinance number eight, 2020. The university's official monies in the amounts of 20% from the sewage disposal fund, 20% from the fireworks fund, 20% from the solid waste management fund, and 20% from the sperm water utility fund, for the benefit of the city's general fund to defray 2019 operation costs of the city Besire's municipal offices and authorizing, and directing the city auditor to draw their pardon therefore, and determine emergency. That is referred to the finance committee.
The motion to accept that as the first reading.
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Would be referred back to the finance committee. Public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation as the record for the first time. There will be none. Committee report on pending legislation. Finance committee.
Yes, finance committee is favorable to ordinance eight dash 2020, the enterprise fund reimbursements.
Need motion to accept the finance committee's report on that?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consideration of proposed legislation for the second time, so we got...
Two ordinances and a resolution. I'll read the captions again. Ordinance number three, 2020, amending with the supplemental in section 1157, point zero two, entitled official, zoning district map, under chapter 1157, entitled zoning districts, and zoning district map, under chapter nine, entitled zoning districts, under part 11, entitled pioneering codes, of the certified ordinances of the city Besire, by the red designation of the properties located in 1815 East Mansfield Street and 1829 East Mansfield Street, for council members 4,300, 1328, 3,001, and 4,300, 1328, 3,000, from general business, the general business district into LIC, the limited commercial industrial district. That has already been federally approved by the planning committee at the last meeting. Ordinance number four, 2020, amending the supplemental in section 351, point 14, as the certified ordinances of the city Besire's Ohio, by redesignating an electric, an electric vehicle park, charging only parking space, and including a two-hour parking limit. That was referred to the public lands and buildings committee, which thought was a favorable resolution. And finally, resolution number 205, 2020, authorizing and directing the Besire's Public Service Safety Director, on behalf of the city Besire's Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for contracts not exceeding $205,000, with the lowest and best bidder or bidders for the installation of a UV system and a waste product treatment plant. And finally, authorizing and directing the Besire's city auditor to draw more to voice, in payment therefore, from the appropriate appropriation for appropriations, and that is approved out of the favorable resolution by the service committee to be spread. And so we have the question.
Need motion to accept those as the second reading.
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation. Does any member of the general public want to present input or comments on the legislation as it's just read? Please state your name, and I will go.
Robert Taylor, for the, for the council. If I understand correctly, you mentioned the electric park for the, the recharging station. Is that what we're talking about here?
Yeah.
So, is that, is that already done, do you?
No, it's, it's, that was just the second reading, other than the next regular.
I'm not going to give my personal opinion on whether the city should or should not do this, because I'm under the understanding from council and county commissioners, my opinion doesn't matter. Anyway, I would urge you to look into this. One of the main components of the batteries that go on electric cars is cobalt. Cobalt's being mined, 50% of it is, of the world's supplies mined in Republic Congo with slave labor. Lithium is another component. They just found major, major stockpiles of lithium in Afghanistan. Now, I understand the economic side of this, of how it can be attractive for people to come to Besire's because we have a charging station. How much, what's the dollar worth? How many lives? And how long, how much longer is the US government going to stay in Afghanistan? For twenty years, we've heard how this, these wars were for oil. Well, now it's going to go from oil to lithium, because let's be honest, the, the electric cars are going to grow. That, that's going to become very prevalent, and so now we know how the batteries are being made and where the materials are coming from. Let's talk about the electricity. They got to be recharged. Thirty-five percent of electricity generated in the United States is from natural gas. That's fossil fuel. Twenty-seven percent is from coal. That's another fossil fuel. Nineteen percent from nuclear, about seventeen percent is renewables, and 1% from drilling. I'm just asking you guys to look into that, research that before you make a decision on this, because we're worried about pollution here. We're Tree City USA now. That's an environmental thing, right? We want to, we want to make the planet better for our kids. What's that say about us if we're going to promote an industry that's using slave labor to mine components for batteries to recharge that take electricity that use fossil fuels? Do I have the answer on how to fix all that? No. And if we're worried about pollution of Besire's, that's probably something to consider. Thank you.
Need anybody else want to address counsel on any of the legislation? Hearing none. Consideration of pending legislation. We have the ordinance for the enterprise fund reimbursement. For the second and third reading of ordinance eight dash 2020, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yorke? Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Ordinance number eight, 2020.
Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance eight dash 2020?
So moved, second.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay. Third reading of ordinance eight dash 2020, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency? So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yorke? Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Ordinance number eight dash 2020 is duly adopted. And then the other ordinance is on there, we're just going to leave this as a second reading. So unfinished business. Anybody have any unfinished business? None. New Miss Lane's business. Anybody have any new, new Miss Lane's business? I think we have none here. Thursday, February 27th, Chamber of Commerce, 2020 Business and Industry Forecast Breakfast. That'll be at the Trillium Event Center at 7:30 AM. It's $20. Also on Friday, February 28th, we have a group three sewer separation public meeting in the council chambers at 6:00 PM. And on Wednesday, March 11th, Arrowhead Drive, public meeting, council chambers, 6:00 PM. Need a motion to excuse Mr. Trucca?
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Trucca is excused. Joint Legislative Committee means all referrals. The Miss Council meeting and any open project list items may be discussed during the committee meeting.
And we have a four new referrals for Thursday. We have the, the library appointment at the Council Development. We have the engineering appropriations for Times Metaborg, from the city safety director to finance. We have the resolution supporting the, the levy for the council of aging from the law director to finance. We have the rental property registrations, registration from the law director to have the safety. Already in committee and on the agenda for Thursday, we have the, the company rezone request and plating. All we need to do there is reschedule the public hearing date, because we, I screwed up basically last time. We need to prove it back in a few weeks. That's all we have to do on Thursday on that. The Finley Hill easement, that went through public, I withdrew plating, the request for the station. Public plans needs to give their say on that as well. Parking lot number two, we have a, we have an interested buyer in that, in our parking lot, that is in public lands and buildings. That was discussed, which we have already done on the court, so we need to revisit that Thursday. We have a trio bids, and we've come up with that every, this, this year every time. That's the service, our committee. We have the second amendment sanctuary city proposal, that is in health and safety. And we have the ad hoc committee of those procedure. And we did that before two weeks ago, but we'll give it another try on Thursday. Anything else you want to add to the agenda Thursday, let me know by 11:00 PM tomorrow, and that's all we have.
Need motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned at 8:00.